Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council meeting of the 25th of September 2019. Bienvenue à la conseilure municipale de la ville d'Ottawa pour le 25 septembre 2019.
Welcome to this meeting of the council for the 25th of September.
For those who are able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem. You can go to range, standing, and I'll ask our colleague councillor Tierney to introduce our special guest who will sing our national anthem. Go see.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Elena Ellis currently attends Colonelby High School, where she's in grade nine, enrolled in the international baccalaureate program. Elena is passionate about her music, enjoys both pop and jazz, and began singing onstage since age of eight. Elena has performed at regional fairs, talent shows, store openings, and the Canadian citizenship ceremony. She is very excited to be here with you today. Please, Elena, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very, very much for that wonderful rendition of our national anthem. And good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs. We have a number of presentations to start with. For our first presentation, I invite the honourable Lisa MacLeod, Minister of Tourism, Culture and Sport, along with Mr. Gordon Stringer and Ms. Kathleen Stringer to please join me. And I also want to recognize Tim Fleischer, Executive Director, Concussion Legacy Foundation Canada, Samantha Bureau, Concussion Legacy Foundation Canada, Mr. Andy Fantous, 2007 Grey Cup Champion and concussion education advocate, and Kelly Armstrong, NCAA hockey player for the Harvard Crimson. Minister, welcome. Nice to have you back at City Hall. On March 7th of last year, the province of Ontario passed Rowan's Law and related amendments to the Education Act.
Le set mousse de mi-10 août, le programme de l'Ontario a adopté le loi Rowan et apporté des modifications à la loi sur l'éducation.
On March 7th of last year, the province of Ontario passed Rowan's Law and related amendments to the Education Act.
The goal of this legislation, which received all party support and was spearheaded by Lisa, is to protect amateur athletes from improving concussion safety on the field and at school. The legislation was named to honor Rowan Stringer, a 17-year-old varsity rugby player from Ottawa.
Cette loi était intitulée ainsi en mémoire de Rowan Stringer.
The legislation was named to honor Rowan Stringer, 17-year-old varsity rugby player from Ottawa.
Rowan had three head injuries within six days while playing high school rugby, and she, along with her coaches, teachers, and parents, didn't realize that she was concussed. Rowan sustained multiple concussions resulting in a catastrophic swelling of the brain. Tragically, Rowan passed away from her injuries in May of 2013, and she's greatly missed by her family, her friends, and her community. I want to thank Rowan's parents, Gordon and Kathleen, for being here today and for your work in advocating concussion education. You're doing important work in your daughter's memory. Ce que vous faites en mémoire de votre fille est très important.
You are doing very important work in your daughter's memory.
And thank you to all who are here today, who are in the front row and with Minister MacLeod, for your hard work to bring increased awareness about the dangers of concussions. I'd like to present Minister MacLeod and Gordon and Kathleen Stringer with the proclamation and declare September 25th Rowan's Law Day in the city of Ottawa. Now it asks Minister MacLeod to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and your council colleagues, and to all Ottawa residents for this proclamation. As many of you know, when Rowan Stringer passed away tragically at the age of 17, she captured our entire city's heart. And the advocacy by her mother and father, Gordon and Kathleen Stringer, made real change and real progress. As many of you know, Rowan's Law was introduced by me as an opposition member of provincial parliament as a conservative, but it passed the legislature unanimously with the support of the New Democrats and the Liberal Party. And it was cosponsored by Catherine Fife of the New Democrats and John Fraser, another local MPP from the Liberals. That cross-partisanship was very important to build the Rowan's Legacy Project, which is what I call it, because we were able to bring people from all walks of life across different parts of Ontario, from a variety of different sports, to talk about how important this was. It followed up after we passed Rowan's Law with enabling legislation for a second piece of legislation. And now I find it almost serendipitous that the legislation we brought forward almost four years ago to this day, we were able to come back home and go to Rowan's pitch in Napaian and announce $105,000 to the Concussion Legacy Foundation, which was matched by the Len Asper Foundation, so that we could continue to have symposiums right across the province in Rowan's name. We also did something that was, I think, very special. Today, we commemorated Rowan and her work as a rugby player and builder from beyond with a $10,000 donation to the, or investment, to the Napaian Sports Wall of Fame. And so, fittingly, in the P and Sports Black, there will be a portrait and a plaque commemorating Rowan. This is, I know I've had two minutes, but I'm going to go on the schedule of the LRT. I use this joke on them all the time, it's just never in public. But I just, I wanted to say it's really important that we're all here together, and the city of Ottawa has been tremendous in supporting us. And I'd be remiss not to say thank you to the mayor, as well as councillor Jan Harder, for always being there, for supporting our legislation at the beginning. And I look forward to going back to Mother Teresa today so we can speak with 500 students, and then to work with our Red Blacks this evening at a free symposium that will be headlined by Eric Lindros, as well as Nick Kiprio. So, thanks all very much. I know it went a little bit longer, but the opportunity to speak to you all today about concussions awareness and Rowan's legacy was really important to all of us. So, thank you very much, and thank you for your generous contribution.
Notwithstanding, it was in my notes, I was supposed to invite Jan here as the ward councillor. And Jan, as Lisa said, has done an incredible amount of work, and maybe we'll get a picture with Jan and Rowan's mom and dad. So come on up here.
I want to also extend my gratitude to Mayor Watson and council members today, particularly Jan Harder. We've, since that, since that day in 2013, we've always felt so supported by our community here. And the recognition today just extends that for us. Rowan was very proud to be from Ottawa, to represent Napaian in various sports activities that she did. And to have something like this today in her memory is, it's very special for us and for her. I know she would, she'll be looking down pretty happy today. Thank you.
That's yours. Well, thank you both very, very much for being here, and your friends and colleagues as well. For our next presentation, I'd like to invite Ms. Lorena Diaz-Burgos, Ms. Juliet E. Brown-Doll, Ms. Shauna Bogard, Ms. Patty Salazar, and Mr. Mitchell Hunt from Up With People to join us. And I apologize for messing your names up. Welcome. Bienvenue. Bienvenido. Up With People is an international education and cultural program for young adults between the ages of 17 and 29 that bring people together through volunteerism and music. For more than 50 years, Up With People has been inspiring people all over the world to be agents of change through their music and message. Le but est d'encourager les gens de partout à bâtir un mot où l'espoir, la confiance et le pays.
The aim is to encourage people all through the world to create a world where hope, confidence, and peace are present.
Empower youth as positive change agents, build an international network of global citizens. And one of the most impressive things Up With People, with Up With People, is that in addition to spreading their message throughout their international touring cast, many of the thousands of Up With People alumni continue to make a positive difference in the world. It's a great time to be in Ottawa right now, because Up With People's newest production, Live on Tour 2019, will be performed at Meridian Theaters at Centre Point on October 10th and 11th. The show features international songs and dances, entertainment pop medleys, and original songs crafted to inspire people to keep their, keep hope alive in their own respective communities. As part of this initiative, Up With People will have 100 young people from 15 different countries coming to Ottawa from October 1st to 12th. I think it's wonderful that all of these individuals will be volunteering with local organizations and initiatives in our city, including our GLAD Fall Cleaning the Capital and Ottawa Community Housing, to name a few. Community work like this is a staple of Up With People's mandate, to contribute to the communities they come to. I'm proud they've chosen to come back to Ottawa for their first time in 20 years. And welcome to Ottawa, welcome back to Ottawa. And for those 100 people who join you on October 1st, I look forward to welcoming them to our city. I'd now like to present Ms. Lorena Diaz-Burgos with the proclamation and declare October 1st to October 12th Up With People Week in the city of Ottawa.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lorena Diaz. Thank you so much for having us here. On behalf of Up With People, I just want to thank everyone that has made this visit possible. We are coming back after 20 years of absence, and we could not be more excited about this. Thank you to Canada Care Medical, TD Bank, Real Strategy, Canada Home State Network, Bell Media, and Ottawa Live Magazine. Up With People has existed since 1965. We empower youth to become positive agents of change for a better tomorrow. We are going to be in Ottawa for 12 days. We are trying to impact your community in all possible ways. We will be volunteering more than 2,000 hours of community service. We will stay with local host families to try to learn from your culture and perspective. And we will perform two benefit concerts. And all of our ticket proceeds are going to go back to your community, which is Youth Services Bureau, a scholarship fund for Canadians to travel in any of the Up With People programs, and the Governor General's Foot Guards Regimental Association. So we just want to thank you for having us here, thank you for all the support to the city of Ottawa, and to councillor Scott Moffett. We are very, very happy to get to meet people like you. All the support that has been given to us shows us as youth that there is still a lot of hope for this world. So thank you so much for having us here.
Thanks. Thanks very much. Thank you very much, and welcome to Ottawa. The City Builder Award is presented today to Rowan and Avery Parkinson in recognition of their volunteer work and support for numerous charitable causes. Rowan and Avery are here today on behalf of their Maple Wishes Foundation. It's my honour to invite them to come forward, along with your city councillor, Ralston King, who is right here. Hello. And I want to extend a warm welcome to Avery and Rowan's proud parents, who are also here. This award recognizes people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place through volunteerism or exemplary action. Rowan and Avery, aged 12 and 14, respectfully are sisters and Elmwood students who are on a mission to make Ottawa a better place. Their charitable work includes raising awareness and funds for many local causes, including the Ottawa Mission, the Shepherds of Good Hope, the Ottawa Public Library, and Wobbenos Centre, to name a few. Their dedication to community service was ignited following their grandfather's Parkinson's diagnosis. Rowan, who is now in grade seven, committed herself to raising both awareness and funds for research into the disease. And Avery, now in grade 10, was moved by the homelessness she witnessed in Ottawa and began making sandwiches for the residents of the Shepherds of Good Hope and the Ottawa Mission. They realized they could make a difference in our community, and that inspired them to start a nonprofit organization called Maple Wishes Foundation, and their website is mapewishes.org. Their empathy and generosity are reflected in Maple Wishes' motto, quote, "Inspiring one another to leave positive, enduring footsteps in our wake," end quote. Through their foundation, the girls' fundraisers volunteer and motivate their peers to support many charitable causes in the Ottawa area. Their Butterfly Project, for instance, has raised more than $15,000 for the Parkinson Research Consortium and the Ottawa Hospital, and they've committed to raise $50,000. Their sandwich, their sandwich or two Maple Wishes project continues to grow and has already provided thousands of meals for local shelters. And their Warm Hearts Project has collected thousands of warm clothing items for three shelters. With broad and diverse interests, both Avery and Rowan have inspired peers to play a role in making Ottawa a better place. Other projects supported by Maple Wishes Foundation include Quail House, a home in Chelsea for developmentally challenged adults, More Bees Please, to help restore the bee population in the Ottawa area, and Bookmark, which builds and renews collections of local libraries. With a commitment to diversity, Maple Wishes is also a unique Ottawa story of youth helping youth. They are helping to provide a welcoming environment to Ottawa's immigrant youth through the Ottawa Community Immigration Services Organization, OSISO, their youth program. And Rowan and Avery were honored in 2017 as two of the hashtag #150GreatPeople in Ottawa when they received their Sesquicentennial pins from their Member of Parliament. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Rowan and Avery very much for the wonderful contributions you're making to our community. J'aimerais cesser cette occasion pour remercier Rowan et Avery.
I would like to thank Avery and Rowan for their many contributions to our community.
On behalf of your councillor, councillor King, to present you with the mayor's city builder. Congratulations.
Hello, Mayor Watson, council members, distinguished guests, friends, and family. Avery and I are incredibly honored to be receiving this award today. We make an effort to better our community by working to realize the causes that matter most to us. There are many individuals across the city who volunteer their time and resources to fulfill the same ideal. We are humbled by the fact that you are recognizing us for our dedication to improve Ottawa as we know it for the residents of today and of tomorrow. For this, we offer our sincere thanks to the council members, to Mr. King, and to our mayor, Mr. Watson, all of whom are seated here today. We would like to thank the student body at Elmwood School for their engagement, enthusiasm, and willingness to participate in new ideas, to offer their suggestions, and ultimately get involved in their community. We'd like to thank our deputy headmistress, Megan Enticknap, for continuously helping us to introduce our initiatives to school over the past few years. And lastly, we'd like to thank our parents for supporting us through the entire process, for encouraging our initial ideas and offering us their insightful suggestions as they develop, for enabling us to see how our efforts can always be improved, and encouraging us to consistently hold ourselves to higher expectations. Maple Wishes was created with the intent of inspiring community, particularly amongst youth, as they are the people who will ultimately assume responsibility for the city in the future. In our work with the Ottawa Hospital, Shepherds of Good Hope, OSISO, and Quail House, we have realized that as much as we aim to help further their causes, they have also helped us to understand Ottawa's value. They have shown us that the city is truly a community filled with welcoming people ready to help, and that it is a city worth building. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, very inspiring. Thank you. Our final presentation is something I think we all look forward to each and every year, is the launch of the City of Ottawa's United Way East Ontario Employee Campaign.
I'm pleased to launch the City of Ottawa 2019 United Way East Ontario Employee Campaign.
I'd like to invite the following individuals to join us. Councillor Laura Dudas, honorary campaign chair, Mark Taylor, a familiar face, Vice President, Resource Development, United Way East Ontario, Marc Belage, Director of Strategic Partnerships, United Way East Ontario, Dan Chenye, always the United Way Employee Campaign Chair. Are you punishing him? We're going to get him a gold watch, he's been doing it so long, so Dan is great, great at this. And Rayner Boutet, Campaign Manager, City of Ottawa 2019 United Way Employee Campaign. Welcome all. Bienvenue. And I'd like to recognize the members of our business community and government representatives who have also joined us here today.
The work of our employees and United Way has improved the lives of hundreds of residents of Ottawa.
City employees have raised more than $7.2 million since 2001, when it was designated as the city's corporate charity of choice. Over the past five years alone, city employees have raised more than $1.7 million for local people in need and have changed the lives of more than 5,000 of our fellow citizens. During the 2018 campaign, city employees raised $308,406, exceeding our goal. This year, the city's employee campaign is to help 1,000 local people by raising a total of $300,000. And the connection between the city of Ottawa and the community it serves is strong. Chaque jour, les employés de la ville...
Each day, municipal employees do their best to make Ottawa a place where we can live even better.
...of our community. They help kids, parents, and the elderly with essential supports and programs, and they in fact change lives.
Give to United Way is a 100% local activity, and all funds stay in our, in our community.
Stay locally. Donations are used to support more than 90 local programs, helping people with disabilities, at-risk children and youth, homeless youth, people facing mental health and addiction issues, and many others. A few examples include the Boys and Girls Club, World Skills Employment Centre, and the Disrest Centre of Ottawa and Region. The United Way continuously fosters partnerships between business, government, and the community at large. And we're very fortunate here in Ottawa to have the United Way East Ontario to help identify where support is needed the most in our community and determining how to invest our donations in a way that produce really great results. I'd now like to ask Mark Taylor, Vice President, Resource Development, to say a few words. And the floor is yours, Mark.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Your Worship, and good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a little while since I've had an opportunity to say anything out loud in this room, and I can think of no better reason to come back than to talk this morning a little bit about the United Way. The mayor laid out the work that United Way East Ontario does right here in Ottawa, and I am so thankful for our colleagues here today, Rayner and Dan, whose leadership in the employee campaign is just outstanding, and of course, Mark and Laura, who work to some degree on the inside of the United Way, although Laura, of course, is our city councillor here in Ottawa and a deputy mayor, she is also a member of the United Way's board, and so we count on her both as an inside voice and an outside perspective. Notwithstanding the great partnership that we have with our elected officials here, this is, in many respects, something that's taking place in workplaces all across Ottawa right now, as organizations and workplaces roll out their workplace campaign for the fall. And in that respect, I want to thank our city manager, Steve Cantalacus, and his outstanding team of employees here at the city. You know, there's a lot of ways in which United Way partners with organizations and workplaces to make things change in our community. And notwithstanding the fact that the mayor laid out the amount of money that was raised, we really measure ourselves by the amount of lives that we change. It's not about the money, it's about what we do with it, and it's about how it affects lives across our community. And in that, we have a special relationship with the city of Ottawa and city employees, because more so with them than with many others, we directly serve the same clients across our community. We are, in many ways, all working towards the same outcomes, to make sure that kids get a chance to be all that they can be in Ottawa, that we move people from poverty to possibility, and that we're building the healthiest and strongest communities that we can. And so, it is not uncommon to see team members from the city of Ottawa in the United Way hallways as they sit down with us, help guide us, help partner with us, and help work with us to move the needle for residents all across the community. So, my message today is simple. I want to say thank you to all of the City of Ottawa employees who are going to take part in the campaign. I also want to thank all of the City of Ottawa employees who go to work every day and in some way help advance the goals that we are all commonly striving for, to make our city an even greater place. Thank you very much, Ms. Sebo Kupi.
This morning, in the honor of Franco Ontarians Day, I took part in the raising of the flag, the Franco Ontarian flag, with the Chair of Acfor Ottawa, the choir of a Catholic school, and my colleagues from city council, deputy mayor, and members of the community.
Franco Ontario Day, celebrations and contributions by this community to the cultural, social, economic, historic, and political fabric of our city.
This afternoon, I will be visiting two schools from the Public School Board of Ottawa with Tim Tierney and councillor Janet Sides to celebrate the Francophonie with youth. So I encourage you to participate in the activities of the day that will take place all over the city. Have a great Franco Ontarian Day.
Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Conseil Lulaf, conseil Dudas. Councillor Harder, here.
Councillor Harder, here. Councillor Suds, here. Councillor Elshantiiri.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli. Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans. Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councillor Fleury.
Here.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Cloutier.
Present.
Councillor Blay.
Present.
Councillor Darousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffat. Councillor Meehan.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Present.
You have quorum.
Confirmation of minutes, adoption of process verba pour le 11 septembre 2019. Confirmation of minutes from September 11th, 2019. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflits d'intérêt, y compris l'écoulement de réunions antérieures. Councillor Darousse, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I hope Councillor Darousse declared potential direct pecuniary interest on the following item to be considered at the city council meeting of September 25th, 2019. Item one, report to the council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of Councillor Darousse as section 223.4, number five of the Municipal Act in 2001 and section 15 of the Code of Conduct for members of council, authorise council to impose sanctions that may impact my remuneration as Member of Council.
Okay, thank you. Any other declarations of conflicts of interest? Communications as presented, regrets. Councillor Shirelli, Deans, Luloff and Moffat advise they will be absent from the city council meeting of the 25th of September 2019. Motion requiring suspension of the rules. First item is Councillor Diane Deans' leave of absence on suspension. Carried. On behalf of all members of council, I'd like to take a moment to send our best wishes and positive thoughts to Councillor Deans, who has recently received a devastating cancer diagnosis.
Council is with the family of Councillor Deans.
Her strength and determination have always served her and her residents well. I'm confident that the same strength and courage will serve her well in the coming months as she takes on these serious health challenges.
On behalf of all city council members, residents of Ottawa, I'd like to note that you will be missed during this period.
I want you to know that we will work collaboratively to look after your constituents and to shepherd a resolution to any ward issues in your absence. Please rest well and concentrate on your recovery and please take the time you need to come back to us stronger than ever. And we look forward to your return as quickly as you're able. Of course, our thoughts are with you and your family in the face of this difficult test.
You're not alone in this fight. Your friends and colleagues here at the City of Ottawa and the population of Ottawa are all behind you.
The first is a move by myself, seconded by Councillor McKenney. Whereas Councillor Deans has provided notice to the mayor and city clerk of her inability to attend at committees, local boards and councils for an indeterminate period of time while she receives treatment for cancer. And whereas there are a number of legislative and administrative matters that must be addressed by a resolution of council to provide for this leave and to ensure that Ward 10 matters are addressed in a timely manner in the ward councillor's absence. And whereas to effect this leave, section 259.1(c) of the Municipal Act 2001 and subsection 8314a of the city's procedure bylaw permits council to excuse the absence of a member of council by way of a resolution of council. And whereas the delegation of authority bylaw permits council to excuse the member of council by way of resolution of council. And whereas the delegation of authority bylaw requires the concurrence by the ward councillor prior to various planning approvals being given and other procedures and processes also provide for ward councillor concurrence. And whereas Councillor Deans has indicated that she wishes to delegate her concurrence in such matters to councillors Brockington and Meehan for the duration of her leave. And whereas there will be routine bills that are either of an administrative nature or for expenditures that have been previously authorised by the ward councillor's office. And whereas the standing committees of which Councillor Deans is a member have sufficient membership to continue to meet in her absence. Therefore, be it resolved that city council authorise a leave of absence for Councillor Diane Deans. Be it further resolved that concurrence under the delegation of authority bylaw for Ward 10 matters be given by councillors Brockington and Meehan. Be it further resolved that the membership and quorum of the CPS and the Transportation Committee be reduced by one until such time as Councillor Deans returns to take her seat on committees. And be it further resolved that council delegate to the city clerk and the manager of legislative services the interim authority to approve the payment of costs from the Ward 10 office budget arising from routine bills and consultation with the Ward 10 office staff and councillors Brockington and Meehan for annual seasonal events where a past practice for such costs being paid can be established if there are sufficient funds within the office budget to do so. So, on the motion, carried. The next motion firing suspension of the rules is appointment to the Police Services Board on suspension. Carried. Move by myself, signed by Councillor Tierney. Whereas on December 12th, 2019, city council appointed Keith Egley to the Ottawa Police Services Board. And whereas in light of recent medical issues, Councillor Egley is no longer able to continue to support his full legislative workload. And whereas the mayor has advised he is able to fill Councillor Egley's seat on the Ottawa Police Board. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council accept Councillor Egley's request of a K to seat on the board and appoint Mayor Watson to the board in Councillor Egley's stead. Carried.
Question.
Councillor Leaper.
Thanks. One quick question. The mayor is on the Police Services Board ex officio, so may I just get some clarification about why you are being appointed to Councillor Egley's seat?
Because Councillor Deans has my seat right now and she will remain on the board until when she comes back.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, on the motion, carried. So, the next is suspension of the rules with respect to Councillor Shirelli. Carried and suspension. So, I'll move this as the chair. We need a seconder. Who will second?
What's the motion?
Well, I can read it out and then, can we do that, Mr Clerk? Read it out and then determine if there's a seconder?
Actually, Councillor Cloutier has indicated to me, Mr Mayor, that he would second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Whereas councillor...
Yeah.
Okay, so the wording of the motion was in the procedure memo and we're going to get it up on the screen. And with the indulgence of council, I can read the motion. We're not taking a vote until we read the motion. And then I think the clerk may have some comments as well.
Before we suspend, we should...
Well, I think we already did suspend. I didn't hear any no's. So, I'll read it out for the benefit of the members of the public. Whereas Councillor Rick Shirelli has provided notice to the mayor and the city clerk, including medical documentation of his inability to attend at committees and council for an indeterminate period of time, and at least until October 9th, 2019, inclusive due to medical issues. And whereas there are a number of legislative and administrative matters that must be addressed by a resolution of council to provide for this leave and to ensure that Ward 8 matters are addressed in a timely manner in the ward councillor's absence. And whereas to effect this leave, section 259.1(c) of the Municipal Act and subsequent 8314 of the city's procedure bylaw permits a council to authorise the absence of a member of council by way of resolution of council. And whereas the delegation of authority bylaw requires the concurrence by the ward councillor prior to various planning approvals being given and other city procedures and processes also provide for ward councillor concurrence. Whereas Councillor Shirelli has indicated that he wishes to delegate concurrence to councillors Hubley and Moffat for the duration of this leave. And whereas there will be routine bills that are either of an administrative nature or expenditure that have been previously authorised by the ward councillor's office. And whereas the standing and subcommittees of which Councillor Shirelli is a member have sufficient membership to continue in his absence. Therefore, be it resolved that council authorise a leave of absence for Councillor Rick Shirelli. And be it further resolved that concurrence under the delegation of authority for Ward 8 matters be given by councillors Hubley and Moffat. And be it further resolved that membership and quorum of the Planning Committee, Build Heritage Subcommittee and IT Subcommittee be temporarily reduced by one until such time as Councillor Shirelli returns to take a seat on these committees. And be it further resolved that council delegate to the city clerk and the manager of legislative services the interim authority to approve the payment and costs from the Ward 8 office budget arising from routine bills and in consultation with the Ward 8 office staff and councillor Hubley and Moffat for annual seasonal events where a past practice for such costs being paid can be established if there are sufficient funds within the office budget to do so. So, Mr Clerk, I understand that you have a recommendation with respect to the first, therefore be it resolved.
Yes, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to just make a few comments before that with regards to the procedure, as I heard that members were concerned about this. I want to assure you that, first and foremost, this is a templated motion for the largest part, so this is exactly the same as the motion you have now carried with regards to Councillor Deans. But there is one difference. I mean, and I'm not talking about the two members of council and the difference committees, I'm talking about a particular difference that I will make reference to. As members are aware, section 259, sub 1(c) of the Municipal Act does not talk about three meetings of council, which we've read in the newspapers, but it actually says that the office of a member of council of municipality becomes vacant if the member is absent from the meetings of council for three successive months without being authorised to do so by a resolution of council. So, if we take Councillor Deans, she is off, as we know, receiving medical treatment, she will be off. She told me for about six months, so you have already agreed to that extended leave of absence. In this instance, this is the same as we've done in the past with Councillor Midic and Councillor Blay, but there's a difference in the recital of the first paragraph. And in that, I've asked Councillor Shirelli if I could put it in. He agreed. And the recital actually talks about an indeterminate period of time, which is the same as every other motion we've had, but it includes the fact and at least until October 9th, 2019. So, I pondered that last night, Mr Mayor. That is only two weeks away. And when I look at that particular fact and then I look at the four resolutions that members of council have before you, I would recommend that it is possible for you to sever off the first recommendation, which is the indeterminate leave of absence, and I'll get to why. And I think it would be appropriate for members to consider and pass resolutions 2, 3 and 4, because I think, as I've heard with Councillor Hubley, who's told me, it's very important that the residents of Ward 7 continue to get assistance from the city in representation as well. With regards to the first resolution and when I look at the recital that talks about October 9th, that is a mere two weeks away, Mr Mayor. Whether or not you pass the first resolution will not affect that. And what I mean by that is, there is no requirement for you to pass this for the councillor not to be off until at least October 9th. It does not affect the three months consecutive meeting because he is not verging on the end of the third month, so this is not in any dire straits of operation of law. And as a result, I'm of the view that the first resolution at this point in time is premature. So, Mr Mayor, I would recommend that while council can pass resolutions 2, 3 and 4, and I recommend that, that instead council table the first resolution. And as you and I have discussed, Mr Mayor, I would be pleased to continue to work with the ward councillor, to get updates from time to time and bring them back to council as is required. That would allow council, in the tabling, very simply to lift it from the table at some future time when it was more appropriate. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so, the clerk's recommendation is that we basically not vote on the first, therefore be it resolved that council authorise a leave of absence for Councillor Shirelli and table that. So, we'll need a mover and seconder if people are willing to do that. And questions and comments, Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will so move that the first resolution be tabled and left just to vote on the remaining resolutions. A couple of quick questions. The Municipal Act is fairly clear. It's three consecutive months of absences from meetings. Does anything in approving the remainder of this motion change? Has the clock started and does this stop the clock?
Nothing would change council from dealing with resolutions 2, 3 and 4 at this point in time. The clock is ticking, as it were, and nothing would stop it at this point in time from stopping. So, council would have all that flexibility retained.
Thank you. And second question. The motion speaks to putting councillors Hubley and Moffat, giving them some responsibility for ward issues. Has Councillor Moffat extended his concurrence with that?
Yes, Mr Mayor, he has.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKenney?
No.
Okay. So, I'll move and Councillor Leaper will second the motion to remove the leave of absence. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? Mr Clerk? No. So, move by myself, signed by Councillor Leaper, that the first resolution of this motion, bracket, therefore be resolved that city council authorise a leave of absence for Councillor Rick Shirelli, end bracket, be laid on the table and the city clerk be directed to continue liaison with Councillor Shirelli and update council as needed. And the motion, carried. On the primary motion as amended? Carried. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pour ta présentation de rapports.
Great, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. That the report from the Integrity Commissioner entitled Report to Council on the Inquiry Respecting the Conduct of Councillor Darousse, Ottawa Board of Health, Report 4, the report from the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation entitled The Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation 2018 Annual Report, Build Heritage Subcommittee, Report 5, Community and Protective Services Committee, Report 6, Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management, Report 5, Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report 7a, Planning Committee, Report 12, Transit Commission, Report 2, and the report from the city clerk entitled Information Previously Distributed, IPD, Revised Agreement Between the City of Ottawa, Champions Baseball Club, 300 Coventry Road, and the summary of oral and written submissions for the item subject to the Planning Act Explained Requirements at the City Council Meeting of September 11th, 2018, received and considered.
On the motion, carried. Reports, we'll go through the Consent Agenda, Integrity Commissioner. Received, carried. Ottawa Board of Health, Public Health Modernisation of Relationship Between the City of Ottawa and Ottawa Public Health. Carried. Ottawa Community Lands Development, we have a brief presentation, we'll come back to that. Item number four, information previously distributed with respect to 300 Coventry, since it deals with item 16, we'll deal with it at the same time, 4 and 16 together. Committee reports, Build Heritage Subcommittee, Report Number Five. Soue Committee de Patrimoine Batie Rapport Cinq, Clammeaux Estate Preliminary Heritage Study, Phase Trois de l'étude de prélimaire de la patrimoine de domaine Clammeaux. Carried. CPS, Report Number Six. Rapport Number Six de Committee de Service de Communauté de Protection. Item six, Recreation Facility Infrastructure Standards. Councillor Suds and Egley have a technical amendment. Is it, does anyone wish to discuss this? We'll hold it, otherwise we can do the technical amendment now. Agreed? So, Councillor Suds, if you'd like to introduce the technical amendment, please.
Sure. Whereas the report entitled Recreation Facilities Infrastructure Standards was considered by the Community and Protective Services Committee on September 19th, 2019, and recommends approval of new recreation facility infrastructure standards. And whereas, following committee consideration, staff identified a number of technical modifications that should be made to the draft standards prior to council approval to allow for greater flexibility and reflect best practices as identified by the internal working group. Therefore, be it resolved that council approve technical amendments to Document Three, Document Four and Document Five as listed in the attached appendix A to this motion.
Okay, so that's signed by Councillor Egley. It's a technical, a series of technical amendments. On the amendment, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Next is item seven, Licensing Regulation of Payday Loan. I have a question on that, so we'll come back to that. Item eight, Updated Community Funding Framework and Next Steps for the Community Funding Framework. Carried. Item nine, Financial Statements for In-House Solid Waste Collection External Audit Results 2018. État financier pour la collecte des déchets. Received. Item 10, Lead Pipe Replacement Program Update. Exclusion de programme de remplacement des conduites de branchement en plomb.
Quick question.
Quick question. Do you want to do it now?
Just confirmation, first off, the team did a really good job. I mean, we have amazing experts at the city on that and it's quite reassuring. But I want to make sure we've done a really good job with the LRT of informing every resident of the services. I wonder what is our communication approach to inform those who might be at risk of having lead pipes? Could we do a similar communication outreach for this issue?
Mr Mayor, we are...
Mr. Mayor, we are doing outreach now and will continue it, and certainly will continue to do that in the future.
So just to clarify, will everyone that we suspect around 30,000 individual residence addresses might be at risk, are they receiving something at their, in their mail?
I'll take that away and get back to the councillor on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, on the report, item 10, Lead Pipe Replacement, carried. Item 11, 2018 Drinking Water Quality Management System Manual Management Review, Report and Operational Plan Rapport Annuel de l'Examen par la Direction et Plan d'Exploitation en Vertu de la Norme de Gestion de la Qualité de l'eau Portable de 2018. Is it a quick one, or? Okay, go ahead.
We have amazing drinking water, and I apologize, I should have gone to committee on this. We need to do better job at communicating with non-English and French speakers of the quality of the water. So would it be a direction to staff to take that and find ways to communicate with some of our minority communities that don't speak English and French as to what we're communicating to the public around safety for our drinking water?
Mr. Mayor, we'll certainly take that direction.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the report, item 11, carried, as updating. Item 12, Solid Waste Master Plan, Council Sponsors Group, appointing councillors El Chantier and councillor Dudas, carried. Fedco, Report Number 7, Orientation Calendrier Process de Consultation Propose pour le Budget de 2020, carried. Numéro 14, Ajustement de Budget des Emilisations et Secession des Projets Soutenants par les Impôts Fonciens.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I had some questions on item 13.
Okay, with concurrence, agreed? Okay, so we'll come back to that. Item 14, adjustment of budget, closing of project city tax and rate support it, carried. Councillor May, is it a quick one or more in-depth?
There's a question for Mr. Ross.
Okay, well, we'll come back to that, then. That's 14. Item 15, Proposed Process for the 2019-2022 council, term of council priorities, processes proposed dans le cadre des priorités de mandat 2019-2022 de Conseil. Who's asked for it? Okay. Item 16, we'll come back to that, because we're dealing with it and item 4 together. Item 17, Motion, Rito Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee, carried. Item 18, Planning Committee, Report Number 12, Rapport Number 12 de Comité de l'Organisme, Étude de Zonage Minéral à la Chelle de la Ville et Modification au Reglement de Zonage, Établissement de Prêt sur Salaire. We're holding the payday loan for licensing. Does anyone wish to hold it for zoning?
Yes.
Do you want, well, we'll, okay, we'll come back to that, then. Item 19, Designing Neighborhood Collector's Streets, Concepcion de Route Collectrice dans les quartiers, carried. Item 20, Site Plan Control Bylaw, Technical Amendment, Reglement, Modification Technique, carried. Item number, I'm sorry, Rapport Number 2 de la Commission de Transplant en Commune, carried. Bulk Consent.
Transit Commission, Report Number 2, carried.
I'd like to dissent.
Which item?
The BIA, the, 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 the annual report.
Which one is that? Which number, councillor? You want to dissent on that? Is there a reason why? Do you want to give a reason?
I've tried to do what I can to work with the BIA to ensure that they spend the dollars on the streets, and I have not been successful. I'm one vote, so I want to dissent. I believe they're spending their dollars for festivals and stuff that are not relevant to the business community around Rito Street, so it's important for me to signify my discontent to their investments.
Okay, so dissent, carried on the bulk consent. Sorry, on the bulk consent, councillor? Item B? Okay, go ahead. Is it a quick one, or?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. No, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak out on the Britannia Village and the Ottawa River Flood Protection. I just wanted to point out that this is definitely something that we're going to see more and more of. This is about climate change, and this is something that we're taking seriously, so I thank the staff for working on this motion. And my question is, in terms of the timeline, because this is something that could happen again, and we were pretty close in 2019, and as we know, it also was a lifesaver for 2017. And it should, and people should be reminded that this is an initiative that did not come from government, this is an initiative that came from residents. And residents at the grassroots who saw the need for this. So my question remains, the timeline in terms of being ready for next year.
So, Mr. Mayor, this project is under the control of the Conservation Authority, that what this item before council is just an agreement to help sponsor the payment for those repairs. If we don't have the answer, we, if I could have one moment. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm advised, we don't have a precise timeline yet, but we have a meeting with the councillor scheduled, and before that meeting, we will get that timeline for the councillor.
I appreciate it, since we don't know what next spring will look like, and we don't have much time to work with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So on the bulk consent agenda, with the dissent by councillor Flurry noted, carried. Okay, we're back to Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation, and councillor Harder has a brief presentation on behalf of the board of directors, and then councillor Dudas and Harder have a, I believe, a technical amendment to the bylaws. So, welcome councillor Harder, in your capacity as Chair of OLDC, and the floor is yours. If we could have councillor Harder's microphone on, please.
Danishwar, if you could go to the next page, please. Okay, this will be a brief presentation. I'm here with Peter Radke, who's in an acting role right now as director, and Danishwar Nirmal, it's a very small department, but they've done a lot of good work. Back in 2009 was when Ottawa City Council agreed to pull together this group called the Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation. It was incorporated in 2009, and since then, the sales, Mr. Mayor, have been $85 million, which was part of our purpose. But there was more to our purpose than that. We always had the four pillars. I was the original chair, and I think chair for two terms last term, so in the year I'm going to be talking about, councillor Mary Ann Wilkinson was the chair. And this year, we've started with two citizen members as our chair and vice chair, Pamela Sweet and Kathleen Willis. And we continue to go along the same vein that we always have. So we have four pillars we work on. Just give you an example of how that has benefited the city. We have, since our mandate is to optimize the value for not only financial but non-financial community goals, the four pillars that you see before you. One example, we provided land for nonprofit housing and affordable housing units, and promoted transit supportive development, like the community served in my community, Longfields. And that's why, about three years ago, and I remember councillor Flurry was very surprised, and I think councillor Leeper, that in a year Barhaven had the, was the number one infill place and ward in all of Ottawa. It's just, Barhaven, are you kidding me? But it was largely because the Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation took over the undeveloped land in Longfields. We also have protected 17 hectares of national environment area at Shirley's Brook and the UNA lands. And we also provided parks and contributions to recreational facilities, and supported development of institutional and place of worship. And on the last slide, you will see that the annual sales in 2018 were 7.67 million, and here are four images of four of the locations that we were successful in closing the deals on. So 788 March Road, you can see another one in Canada North, 1305 Maritime Way, Lion Street with its distinctive artwork, and another one in Barhaven on Longfields Drive. So we have another aggressive ward plan for this year, but we're on target, and we're certainly on the money. Any questions?
Great. Are there any questions for councillor Harder? Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Chair Harder and the team, for the report and all your work throughout the year. Two quick questions. One is, have you established, I know this is a report in the past, but we're going into the term of council for the next four years. Do you have financial targets? Have you established financial targets? Are those targets provided to you by council? I know the last term, there were very well-defined financial goals that you had. What have you established for this term? That's my first question.
Mr. Mayor, our targets are $5 million a year.
Okay. And I don't know if this question's for you, or I see Mr. Willis or the city manager, but the city declares surplus land. I'm assuming not all of that land automatically is designated to the OCLDC. How much surplus land exists, and how much of that surplus land is under your responsibility to dispose of and sell?
Mr. Mayor, there are really two methods for declaring surplus. We have lands that we consider strategic, and those lands will come before committee and council with a recommendation that they be declared surplus, surplus and transferred to Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation. And then we have just regular disposal processes, and when needed, those be, those are declared surplus at the committee level, they go to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. In terms of the numbers, I can get that back to you.
Perhaps I can ask the city manager to just elaborate. Will council be seeing additional city properties, declared surplus, get them off our books, delegate them down to the corporation for looking for other additional revenue sources? Is this going to be a priority for our staff?
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer that question on the department's behalf, so we do have a tracking list of constant properties that are circulated on a regular basis. If a department, an operating department expresses a need to hold on to a piece of property, or the local councillor identifies a concern about it being retained, they are. We have a running list for review. Many of those, and I've reviewed the list quite recently, are what we consider non-viable type parcels, which if they're put on the open market, the, probably the only buyer is the adjacent landowner to add to their parcel of land. There are very few on the list of a more strategic nature, and those are the ones that we bring forward through reports to committee for transfer to OCLDC. We're not sitting on a big inventory of land that is not being used for municipal purposes.
Very well, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, councillor? Okay, so on the report, I'm sorry, we have an amendment, a technical amendment by councillor Dudas. Councillor Dudas, seconded by?
I'll move it, and she can second it, since I'm here.
Okay, move by councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Dudas. Do you want to read it, councillor?
Kind of hard from here.
Do you want me to read it? I have it here.
Thank you, you read it, please.
Whereas, section 10.07 of the bylaw number one of the Community Lands Development Corporation, the corporation, a copy of which is held on file with the city clerk bylaw number one, provides that a city council director designated by the board shall preside at meetings. Whereas it is in the best interest of the corporation to allow for a city council director or non-city council director to be designated by the board. Whereas the board of directors of the corporation passed a resolution on May 7, 2019, adopting bylaw 3, which repeals and replaces section 10.07 of bylaw number one, and this resolution must now be confirmed by its sole voting member, the city of Ottawa. And whereas section 5.05a of bylaw number one provides that a majority of the directors who have the right to vote shall constitute a quorum of the board of directors for the transaction of a business, provided at least three city council directors form part of that majority. And whereas section 2881 of the Corporation's Act, the Act, states that unless the letters patent, supplementary letters patent, or a special resolution otherwise provides a majority of the board of directors constitute a quorum, but in no case shall the quorum be less than two-fifths of the board of directors. And whereas, can I dispense with this? People who came with, I can keep going if you want. I'll second it. It goes on another half-page. Carried?
Carried.
You want me to go on? Okay, so that resolution is carried, thank you. The report as amended, carried. Thank you councillor Harder for your work on that file. Next item is item 4 and 16 together. This is the Ottawa Stadium item. I understand that councillor Dudas, where is councillor Dudas? She's going to introduce a technical amendment to the main motion, so what's before us is item 16 and item 4. So the council, the committee recommendation is that council approve that should the Ottawa Champions enter into an agreement of purchase or sale, staff be mandated to meet with the prospective purchasers of the team to review the financial viability of the proposal to continue baseball at the Ottawa Stadium. Thank you councillor. So what's before you, and councillor Dudas, you have a technical amendment to the main motion, which you moved at committee, so I'll give the floor to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can read this in here, and so this is seconded by councillor Ralston King, so I want to thank councillor King as well for a lot of his input, as well as councillor Flurry, which has helped shape this motion and the technical amendment. Whereas at its meeting of September 10, 2019, the Finance and Economic Development Committee approved a motion recommending council authorize staff to move forward on a number of matters with respect to the Ottawa Stadium and the property located at 300 Coventry Road. And whereas the recommendations should be revised to ensure staff has the flexibility to respond to all potential scenarios with respect to the stadium, including the fact that an agreement of purchase and sale may not yet be finalized, and to respond to community needs, therefore it be resolved that the committee recommends, recommendations be amended to read as follows. That council approve that given the Ottawa Champions are in negotiations to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale, staff be mandated to, A, meet with the prospective purchasers of the team to review the financial viability of their proposal to continue baseball at the Ottawa Stadium, and to ensure protection of Ottawa taxpayers, including the new ownership group's capacity to enter into a long-term lease, seven to 10 years, the new ownership group's capacity to cover any and all prior arrears which may have accrued at the end of 2019 season, include in lease negotiations the city's ability to redevelop strategic parts of the stadium lands once LRT is fully implemented, identify the appropriate cost recovery and revenue sharing model that minimizes costs to taxpayers, delegate to staff the authority to negotiate a lease agreement in time for the 2020 season, and report back to the Finance and Economic Development Committee and council for approval of the lease before the start of the 2020 season. And that staff be directed to work with all interested members of council, local and national community groups, and stakeholders to develop a vision which would include identifying opportunities for increased community usage of the Ottawa Stadium, including opportunities to increase public and community usage of the facility, including the opportunities for increased community usage outside of the baseball season, and opportunities to attract a more diverse mix of sport uses, including increased college and university access, lacrosse, cricket, and other community options.
Councillor King has a direction to staff on the same item. Councillor King, please.
Mr. Mayor, as an important asset in my ward, I believe it's vital that the city identify and pursue new opportunities to increase the usage and viability of Ottawa Stadium. That's why I'm happy to second deputy mayor's motion, which calls for staff to work with council and all relevant stakeholders to find opportunities to increase public and community usage of the stadium outside of baseball, to attract a more diverse mix of sport and community use. I'm also content that the motion works to protect taxpayers by ensuring that any new ownership group has the capacity to cover prior arrears. With the successful launch of the Confederation Line, we now have an opportunity to explore making the stadium a destination beyond its 50-day baseball season. Additionally, the arrival of LRT also provides a unique, once-in-a-generation opportunity to locate affordable housing on the adjacent site, along with other amenities, as the province has provided the tools to pursue inclusionary zoning around major transit stations. As a consequence, I have a direction to staff. Given that property at 300 Coventry Road has been endorsed by council as a potential site for redevelopment, as a transit-oriented development, I would like to confirm with the general manager of planning, infrastructure, and economic development, and the general manager of recreation, culture, cultural and facilities services, that staff from these two departments will commence a community vision process and consultation. that staff from these two departments will commence a community vision process and consultation on the use of the stadium and potential land use for the approximately 19-acre site prior to the commencement of the formal secondary planning process in 2021, '22, and that the community vision exercise occur in 2020, 2021, and includes an analysis of all options for the site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, before we begin the discussion, I'd like to confirm an important point with the city manager. Mr. Katalakis, yesterday you informed my office that two different groups have written to you this week to ask to enter into negotiations on their desire to secure a lease for the use of the stadium, and on their desire to continue operating a professional baseball franchise at the Ottawa Stadium in 2020, next year. Can you confirm that the following groups have formally approached the city for these purposes, namely a group made up of Rob Abboud, Rob Lavoie, and Fred Sagbini, and a second group consisting of Mr. Reagan Katz on behalf of the Winnipeg Gold Eyes Baseball Club, with the Ottawa Sports and Entertainment Group?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I've received written correspondence from both those groups.
And can you also confirm that it's possible for other groups who may have an interest in using the stadium for professional baseball to write to you to explore their interest?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And I assume that these discussions between the city and prospective baseball tenants have to occur on accelerated basis, because obviously we have to get the team up and ready, ready for the spring of 2020.
That is also correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Flurry, on the motion or the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I too would like to thank councillor Dudas and King for working with me on the motion. I'm certainly interested in the sight, seeing a fulsome vision of the diversity of sports. I do have concerns relating to the existing arrears, and that will be my questions to staff, and also the impacts of anyone taking that on. So, could, following the Fedco meeting, we had asked for a precision relating to what was the outstanding amount due by the champions. Do we have that today?
Mr. Mayor, we included that information actually in this report, in the financial comment. The clerks turned the motion into a report, and as a result, we provided the information there. I advised council, unfortunately late last night, that that's where they would find it. But if you want a summary of it, I would ask, Ms. Duffinson can come up and provide that detail for you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Once the security, the letter of credit is applied to the arrears, which is $108,000, the balance standing and owed to the city will be approximately $463,000. That's inclusive of the repayment agreement arrears, as well as the 2019 contracts.
So, when was the last payment we received for the stadium?
The last payment received was in July, on the 5th, for $10,000, in accordance with the repayment agreement.
Okay. Why aren't we exerting the letter of credit? So, we have a situation where they're in arrears, we've made an agreement, they've not paid to the plan that we had put in place. Why aren't we just pulling the credit line and ending the agreement?
So, the next scheduled payment was missed, which was September 4th. And in accordance with the repayment agreement, they are now noted in default, and we're exercising our right in terms of cashing that letter of credit to protect the city from financial risk.
So, I guess that's my concern, right, is we have an individual, an organization, that we want to see baseball to be successful, yet I see small businesses in the market who rent from the city, and your team's on them when they miss a couple of payments. And unfortunately, some of them get back into it, but some of them have to close. This one here, we seem to be saving them when they really haven't given us clear path on, you know, carrying through the payments. So, I just want to understand from the finance team, what's our strategy to get the payment back? Because what you're providing in the report is the payment plan would extend right into 2023, yet they've already missed payments from the revised plan.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps this will help, to the councillor through the mayor, as the mayor noted, we have two live requests to purchase the team from the current owner. So, the real issue is that, do we not do that and take any action right now, and actually potentially lose all the money if the current owner walks away from the deal? The city's trying to protect itself to ensure that we get those arrears returned to the city, paid to the city. And part of that is, part of the discussions and negotiations we're going to have with the two proponents, to ensure that as part of that deal, the arrears are held to account and the city is made whole. So, because we're in that process right now, and we want to expedite those negotiations, we don't feel it'd be prudent to take immediate action right now against the current team until we see in the next month if we have a workable sale and lease that we can finalize.
Anything else, councillor?
Yeah, I just want to understand, what is the owner's commitment at this point? So, okay, great, there's an attempt to negotiation, there's an attempt to carry through the debt. We all hope that the payment, the actual payments will come through, but what is, what do we have from the current owner relating to their financial commitment and their interests? Because we've heard through the media, they've said, first off, we've known that they let go their employees, and now we also have heard through the media that they're exiting town as of September 30, which is in five days. What does that leave us? I mean, we seem to have this hope that negotiations will be finalized by then. What do we know at this point?
Councillor, in the motion from councillor Dudas, it is a requirement that whoever comes in and wants to buy the team, they have to get a lease with the city of Ottawa. They're not getting a lease with the city of Ottawa unless they eliminate the arrears. So, that's our strategy in how to protect the city of Ottawa taxpayers, is to enter in these negotiations and get whoever is the new team, the new owner, to agree to repay the arrears. And I think they know the only way they can get a city of Ottawa contract of a seven- to 10-year lease is by doing that. I think it's fairly likely that that will happen.
But what is the need to that? Like, what if I, right now, the way we've done the contract, I can show up and get a minor team, and I can rent that field. So, why would I want to carry that debt? We've now changed the contract where the organization had sort of full entity, full use of the stadium. Now, we've done a per-use charge. So, why would I, as an organization who wants to start, who wants to rent the field, have to carry a previous debt? I don't understand. I could walk in and sign a rental agreement with Dance Group. I don't understand why we have so much belief on the negotiations.
Because we're not, a new team isn't looking for a game-by-game arrangement. They're looking for a seven-to-10-year lease, which changes the dynamics of what that field can be used for. So, if you want a seven-to-10-year lease, that's what the city requires, is that the arrears be eliminated. Yes, a team could come in here and do a game-by-game scenario, but when they buy these teams, there's a long-term commitment that they're going to make this sustainable. They have to be able to show that they're going to be here for a long time. So, that's the incentive that they have.
Okay. Just from a motion point of view, I will obviously be supporting the vision that therefore be resolved, that speaks to the visioning. I think that's what the sites need. It really needs to re-anchor itself, multi-sports, looking at housing options, looking at commercial options, looking at diversifying its component. It's tied via rail, it's tied to the LRT, it's close to the 417 on and off-ramp at the Vanier Parkway. I'm uncomfortable with the element of negotiation, because I really think that the caliber of baseball we need shouldn't be holding a debt. We should really hold, the champions and the ownership group currently should own that debt, so that whichever group comes in starts fresh and can have a vision. So, for me, I'll be, I'll ask for the mission to be, the motion to be split. I'll dissent on the first portion relating to the negotiations, and I will support the visioning piece.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Kavanaugh's microphone, please.
Thank you. Thank you. In the motion, we talk about looking for diverse usage, community usage. And I want to repeat and reiterate that we look also at gender equity, too, because this is an opportunity to bring that to sports. It's not something that's necessarily money losers, because we've seen great stars, female stars, doing very well in sports. And we need that encouragement. And I think this is an opportunity to do that in those other uses. Can I have a comment on whether we're going to pursue that? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, yes. The things we would look at are many of the field sports that would have both male and female possibility of participation. And even currently, most of our fields are used by both male and female and intergender teams. But we could certainly keep that top of mind as we're looking for different scenarios for the site.
Thank you. We recently had the national baseball champions, women's baseball championships there in the summer. And we should look for other opportunities to bring these, and be a leader on gender equity in sports. And this is an opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you councillor. Councillor Meehan, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have just a question about the contract initially. You said they made a $10,000 payment in July, but they had missed many payments in the past. At what point did we know that they were in financial trouble? And at what point were they in arrears? And did we do anything at that point to negotiate anything with them?
So, they have been in arrears since 2018, I believe, and we've been in negotiations with them to enter into a repayment plan since that time. So, in the IPD, it lays out the history of what happened with that particular contract, and why we put them, we basically put them into default and canceled the contract, and we moved them to basically a per-game type of scenario, as opposed to a long-term lease.
Is that typical of the contracts we enter into, or is this special because it is a baseball team?
It's, every contract or every lease, that's what this was, has a default, when, what happens if they go into a default on their payment. And typically, it is, we cancel the lease, and in most cases, we bring in the bailiff and we lock the doors. In this case, it's a single-purpose facility. There's not much you can use that stadium for, other than baseball. So, we didn't have an ability to lock them out, per se. So, we worked with them to find a different arrangement. That's why we entered into the repayment agreement with them. That's why we canceled the lease. We moved them to a per-game type of situation.
Mr. Katalakis, if we've got two groups who are interested in continuing baseball here in the city, are they aware that they would be looking at a $400,000 payment in order to get into ball here? Like, and what kind of reaction are you getting to that?
Well, the, both the proponents are very aware. They've had discussions with the current owner. And I also wanted to clarify a point that was asked earlier by councillor Flurry. I mean, the issue for the city is a question of managing our risk. And the biggest risk to us is the current owner walks away and leaves us with the arrears outstanding and doesn't pay. He's American. We would not be able to chase down that, those funds in the States. And I think he's doing the right thing by trying to sell the team. The potential purchasers are obviously going to be negotiating the best deal for themselves, which takes into account the arrears, which would be offset from any value that the team actually has. So, they may actually be paying only the arrears and taking over the team. I don't know. That's going to be their business decision. But for the city, the best outcome for us is that a, another owner comes in, buys the team, which includes the arrears or whatever net value or purchase price is on top of that, and pays back the city versus us locking them out and potentially having bankruptcy, or someone departing the city and leaving the city with the outstanding debt. So, we're trying to minimize our loss and get our money back. It's been part of the negotiations, and we feel now that we have two viable, legitimate owners groups who are interested in the team, who have the financial means to be able to deal with that outstanding debt.
And how are we going to ensure, I mean, we had a contract with the champions. We're looking, entering into another contract. What's to say that the same thing can't happen? I mean, baseball doesn't seem to, I mean, we love baseball, but there's something that prevents a lot, like the fan base, from going out there and supporting these teams so that they can pay their bills. I'm just worried that we're going to see the same thing happen again.
So, first of all, the, if a new team came in, I doubt that they would sign the same type of lease that the champions signed. That's the first thing. The lease that the champions signed was actually stacked against them. It was onerous, to say the least. So, I suspect they will change that, they'll negotiate that. The second thing is, is we will do our due diligence in terms of the, our checks on the financial viability of whoever it is that comes in. They also have to post letters of credit, just like the champions did, and the letter of credit, which we've cashed. So, we will be looking for financial security, and we will also be doing our diligence to make certain that they have the capacity to run a team and pay whatever the new lease would look like.
But if neither of these teams decide that they're going to go ahead and to sign a contract, we ultimately could be left hanging with $400,000. That is correct.
The other thing, Mr. Mayor, I do want to include one other item that I think has been left out of the discussion. We've just recently launched our light rail. The current team never had the advantage of light rail and the transportation promises. When they signed the lease, they believed that light rail would have been operating way earlier than it actually was. And I think it really impacted the ability of people to get to the game, based on the parking situation there, et cetera, and the transportation available there. We built the bridge there. We have a beautiful station now, right at the Via Station, for people to be able to attend the game. And I think the outlook for a new owner group is much improved when you know that you have a significant corridor of transportation delivery right to the stadium, where people can get on and get off and walk across that bridge. And I think that changes the business case very much for a future team coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to pick up on councillor Flurry's concerns. If we are looking at the new owner's capacity to enter into a seven-to-10-year lease, I just don't know how that equates with also going out and doing a visioning for this stadium. So, we're saying, you know, come on in for seven to 10 years, but we're going to, we're going to vision you. We're going to look at the stadium, do something different, because we know, you know, that that's the right thing to do. But I don't know how one can equal the other. I don't know how one can lead to the other.
Mr. Mayor, actually, if I may, there is actually a great deal of opportunity.
Sorry, Mr. Willis. I just ask members of the public, please refrain from applauding. Thank you.
Can we refrain from raising our volume levels?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So, the visioning process and the continuing negotiations are not incompatible for one another. You know, the process of looking at a reuse of a site as complicated as this is a multi-year process in any redevelopment project, any real estate project of its kind. And in the short term, we can look at opportunities, per councillor King's direction, for other uses to be introduced to the site and off-game days by possible minor reconfigurations of the facility that might allow different sports to actually enter into it, to take into account councillor Kavanaugh's comment about bringing other gender opportunities into the programming. This is something we can build into the lease negotiations in the short term. And then that use the time while that goes on to figure out how that building, which is in relatively good condition, can be adapted, reused in time. And it's a very large site. So, we can look with, now with LRT being there, we can look at the parking ratios of what's actually required, and whether or not in time the site could be adapted. A gradual evolutionary plan is very appropriate for the site, and the planning process that councillor King proposed and consulted staff on, I think is the right way to go.
Thank you. I think similar to councillor Flurry, I'd like it split out. I'm not going to be able to support the first part. I do want to see a visioning exercise for this site. It is, you know, a key It is, you know, a key piece of property. It's on LRT now. We, you know, we want to make sure that what we do at that, at that site is the very best usage and for many reasons. But certainly, looking at new ownership to take over for seven to 10 years doesn't, in my view, allow for that.
Thanks, councillor Leeper.
Thank you, Mayor. The two ownership groups have approached the city about talking about a lease. Have we passed on to them our expectation that they're going to pay the arrears that are owed by the current team? What has been their reaction?
Not at this point. They are aware of the arrears as they've spoken, they have been, they've had conversations and they have been having conversations with the current owner. So, they are very aware that the current owner is seeking to include the arrears as part of the sale. But we have not had first contact. I'm in the process of arranging a meeting with them next week to open those discussions with our team.
Okay. What, forgive my ignorance of professional sports, what is the, what is the average top line for this ball team in a year? How much revenue do they bring in in a year?
So, they're a private company. Their financial statements are their own financial statements. So, we are not, we can't share that information with you, unfortunately.
We don't know their top, okay. In a bankruptcy, what would be, what would be our position in the list of creditors?
We probably would be, I would think, at the top of the list of creditors. The problem is, is that the champions have little or no assets.
It's all people.
It's all people. And so, and as Mr. Katalakis stated, the current owner is American. So, we have little or no ability to collect outside of the, outside of Canada.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Blay, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to encourage everyone to vote for the total package for this reason. In addition to the financial considerations that the city treasurer and the city manager have laid out, which I think are very, very important and valid, nothing prohibits any future use of the facility. If the negotiations fail, people who have other ideas on how to use it can pursue them. If they succeed, our planning department has said there may be opportunities in the future for reimagining the non-stadium elements of the, of the, of the building and creating a facility, which I imagine would look a lot like Lansdowne, especially considering who one of the proponents is. I think we need to allow for some creativity from our staff, from the entrepreneurs who are, who are potentially interested in this, and the creativity of the community through the, the, the visioning exercise that councillor Ralston wants to pursue over the next number of years, to see what that brings the city. Baseball, minor sports, is important for children, for adults, for men, for women, for everyone, to create leadership opportunities, for entertainment. There's obviously economic value. And I'm not sure we should give up on it just yet. The Ottawa Stadium was at its best when the Lynx were playing there in my youth with affiliated baseball. There are interests in Montreal, very wealthy interests in Montreal, who are pursuing very actively bringing baseball back to that market. And I think the opportunity to bring affiliated baseball back to Ottawa is certainly of high potential if that were, if that were to happen. And so, I think we need to give everyone the time to develop a plan that has all possibilities open to us. We can close the door today on one, or we can keep them all open for a short time longer to see if we can take advantage of everything.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak until councillor Dudas wraps up on her motion? Okay, councillor Dudas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I appreciate all the, all the feedback received today and once again, and councillor's, councillor Flurry's comments when we were discussing this earlier. You know, the motion speaks to the fact that, it speaks to two aspects. It speaks to the fact that we need to ensure that our taxpayers are not saddled with a debt that was accrued by, by an organization, a private entity. It speaks to the fact that we have faith that our staff will go out and negotiate the best deal and work with a potential partner that will take this on and not have taxpayers absorbing this cost. But it also speaks to that vision that councillor Blay spoke of and councillor King is fully speaking to in his direction, that this stadium has a future in our city. It has numerous possibilities now that we have LRT attached to it. You know, it is a stadium that is built for baseball. You know, we now know from lessons learned that maybe that's not the best way to approach recreational facilities going forward, and we have to take our lessons. But this has been built and we now live with it. So, there, we need to look at what opportunities, whether it's sports or various community uses. And by shuttering this facility, by not allowing us to work with a potential partner, partners to make sure that we're proceeding with sports in this facility, that does a detriment to the community that surrounds it. That ends the conversation there in terms of bringing sports to that area and really to the East End. Because in the East End, this is the closest sporting amenity of this nature to us. I have the Miracle League Network in my community. I have the Orleans Little League Baseball in my community. Those two entities alone have benefited from this facility. But then I can go on and note that the United Way has also benefited from donations of this. During the floods, the Red Cross benefited from the, some of the ticket sales that went through that. I was there to throw out the pitch, you know. And the fact that LRT opens the doors, almost quite literally, to everyone in the city accessing this stadium. To shut this down now means that everyone in our city will be at a detriment and not be able to access the potential this, this facility has. At the, at the very least, looking to the community that councillor King represents and the opportunities there, to not have the time to have a fulsome discussion about what this could truly be, I think is a disservice to that community, to the entire city and to sports. So, I, you know, I ask for support in keeping this, this motion as it is, and I hope that you can all vote in favor of it.
Thank you very much, councillor Dudas. I want to thank you for working with various members of council, including the ward councillor, councillor King, on this proposal. I want to say that I think it's exciting that there are groups actually who are prepared to step up to the plate, excuse the pun, and bid to continue professional baseball in Ottawa. I believe that many members of council and the public, and it's been stated by our city manager and by a number of members of council, having the LRT there is going to be a great help to that facility, because we invested in the Max Keeping Bridge over the Queen's Way. The station at Via Rail drops people off from the East End and from the central West End of the city. And as we know, there's very limited transit options to the stadium itself and limited parking. And when you think about it, this is our only major sports facility that has LRT red at its doorstep. The CTC does not, nor does Lansdowne Park. And in 2020, if all goes well and a bid is successful, we'll see how that Confederation Line really does bring more people into the, into the stadium.
It's also very interesting to see that the city of Ottawa is exploring the possibility of building a stadium for the return of the Major League Baseball.
Know how successful the Lynx was, as councillor Blay pointed out, when they were affiliated with the Montreal Expos. And I believe that councillor Dudas's motion strikes the right balance from a governance perspective. And also, as the city says, the reality is, anyone bidding on this has to deal with the debt they owe the city of Ottawa, plain and simple. Allows this motion, section one, allows our city manager and senior staff to strive to negotiate the key terms that would be included in a lease and those high-level terms that will come back to council for approval. I'm also pleased that councillor King is engaging proactively with staff and his community, because he wants to see consultations with the community begin in this term of council on a long-term development vision for the Ottawa Stadium and the adjacent lands. So, thank you councillor King and councillor Dudas. So, we have before us a motion, which in essence, madam deputy clerk, is the replacement motion. I think there's just really one change, the underline there. Moved by councillor Dudas and signed by councillor King. And councillor Flurry, what do you want to dissent against?
I just want to dissent with the negotiation part. So, it'd be, I guess, the first part. I'll dissent. I know the motion will pass, but I...
Sorry, the whole section of?
The first, therefore be it resolved, and then I'll, I'll support the visioning piece, which is the second piece.
Sorry, do you want to just?
I don't have...
I have it here as item 1A, 1, 2, 3?
Correct. Yeah.
So, that's basically the whole baseball deal then. Okay. So, you're dissenting on that?
Same.
And councillor McKenney? On the motion, carried, and dissents recorded. Thank you. On a point of personal privilege, councillor Egli, please.
Hold on, sorry.
We also have to receive the IPD that we dealt with in item 16. Received. On a point of personal privilege, councillor Egli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize, I should have raised this at the time. Committee report number eight, updated community funding framework and next step for the community funding framework review. I don't have a conflict in the sense of voting on this. I'm allowed to vote on it. But I have been advised by the integrity commissioner to read this statement in, with regard to this report. I rise on a point of personal privilege. My spouse is a member of the Peanrito and Osgood Community Resource Centre Board of Directors, an organization that receives funding from the city. While I have no pecuniary or financial interest on the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I have decided to declare this relationship, provide transparency in the spirit of section one of the Code of Conduct, and to fulfill my responsibilities under section 243 of the Municipal Act in participating in this debate and voting on the matter. In addition, I have filed with the Corax Office a copy of the integrity commissioner's memorandum on this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So noted, madam deputy clerk, in the minutes. Our next item that was held is Planning Committee Report Number 12, Citywide Minor Zoning Study and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Payday Loan Establishments. I think Mr. Mark is going to speak on legal issues. Is Mr. Mark with us? Here he comes. This is an issue that is very frustrating, I think, for a lot of municipalities around the province of Ontario, because these payday loan operators really act as bottom feeders, you know, to some of the most vulnerable in the community. And I wanted to know why we couldn't be more forceful when a, in terms of the grandfathering clause, when a company shuts its doors, why we can't automatically, at that point, say that's the end of their rights to have a payday loan operation, go back into another storefront? In other words, I believe my understanding is with strip clubs, the minute a strip club is closed, they lose the, the right to have another owner come in and operate the strip club. Why can't we do the same with payday loans, Mr. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, the, with payday loans, they will continue to have, if a payday...
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'll deal with the easy scenario first. If there's a payday loan establishment that is in an area where it's not permitted, or if it's within a separation distance of uses, that leads to not being permitted. And if it ceases operation and a new business comes in, the right for a payday loan there is extinguished. However, a payday loan in the two scenarios I discussed does have a legal non-conforming right to continue. And where it ceases operation, the courts do not automatically interpret the use as being abandoned. They look at all the circumstances of the case before they conclude whether or not the legal non-conforming right is extinguished. And so long as the legal non-conforming right is present, under what is proposed, a new establishment could be located within that site, Mr. Mayor.
Well, do we have any evidence of other municipalities and what they've done? Have others gone down the route that I'm suggesting and haven't been challenged in court yet? I don't know if you or Mr. White have an answer to that.
I have not looked at other municipalities, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, Ottawa, like several other municipalities, are taking advantage of brand-new legislation that came into effect only about a year and a half ago. So, Ottawa, Hamilton, and Toronto are all very much on the same trajectory. We, the law hasn't been enabled long enough for us to have court evidence yet.
I think, you know, I think what we're proposing is, is helpful. It slightly improves the situation. But when you go down to certain streets, you know, Montreal Road, Rideau Street, there are just far too many of these operations. They don't add anything to the economic well-being of the community. And I just think that, you know, maybe we have to be more forceful with the province to get them to enact tougher legislation that would allow cities to, when one closes, we don't want it to open up again, because it's not adding to the quality of life in a particular neighborhood. So, I'm certainly willing to correspond with the appropriate minister at Queen's Park to see if we can get the support of other mayors as well at the Large Urban Mayors Caucus of Ontario, because I think this is a problem. And while we're taking some corrective action on a go-forward basis, we still have too many that are, you know, almost side by side on some of the, the streets in our community. So, thank you. Councillor Flurry, you had a question?
Mr. Mayor, you're right on my topic, which is abandonment of use. So, I'm in full agreement with the mayor and, but I just want to go back a second, because I think it's broader than the payday loan. The example I was giving was, given was strip clubs. Do we have the same issue relating to abandonment for strip clubs? So, if a strip club would stop operations, how would we prevent that use from coming back into that same municipal address? Because it's the same regulations, right? It's the separation distances and legal non-conforming rates.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the licensing provisions are written differently for adult entertainment parlors than, than they are for payday loans.
Mr. Mark, you don't have to speak up, though. The councillor can't hear you.
I apologize again, Mr. Mayor. I will try to keep closer to the microphone. I believe the licensing provisions are written differently for adult entertainment parlors than they are proposed for payday loans.
And this is within our power? We've written it differently, or the province?
Mr. Mayor, that comes from the provincial regulations.
So, I mean, I would obviously support the mayor for pursuing that. I want to first and foremost, thank the community. We've been on this for, for many years with a concentration of payday lenders in three real pockets in the city. We have St. Joseph, we have Montreal Road, we have sections of Bank Street, 54 of them. At first, I thought, why allow the use anywhere? But I've educated myself, I've learned, I've participated in the provincial discussion tables. Short-term lending is important. You don't want to push it underground, because then it creates other types of issues. So, I want to thank the community for the work. I want to thank colleagues for pursuing last council to push the province to gain those authorities. And specifically, I want to thank Valerie Brietlo and her team, and David Wise and their team, because they really did a fabulous job of bringing the zoning side and the licensing side, the consumer side. Out of committee, and this is community and protective services, not, not planning, I'm sorry, Jan, I was not able to attend the, the planning one. But out of community and protective services, we did give two direction to staff relating to the mayor and writing to, to the federal finance ministers relating to large banks and check cashing. And I want to make sure that we don't miss that window, because we're, we're doing what we can within our authority. But I want to hear from our clerk relating to the direction out of that committee to ensure that we're pursuing the root causes of these challenges, which are the big banks not doing short-term lending, and also the issue relating to employers not doing direct deposit to, and enforcing charges on the check cashing component. So, just want to make sure that we're pursuing that with the, as per directions of committee.
Mayor, staff are currently following direction and preparing that letter as it was requested.
Great. And again, I want to thank members of council. I want to thank Acorn, who's here in great numbers today, for their work on the issues. Short-term lending is important. It's also important to ensure that it's affordable and that it doesn't trigger the snowball effect of, of bankruptcy. So, I want to thank the team overall, and certainly, let's, let's pursue other levels of government to get to the root cause of this issue.
Merci, conseil Flurry. Councillor Brockington, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not going to enter into debate, because I agree with what's being proposed. And I've certainly shared my comments publicly about these establishments, which frankly, I do not support at all. But I just... But I just wanted to add, there's an AMO board meeting on Friday, and what I'll ask is that we at AMO add this to the agenda. I know that there are some other large members of AMO that have payday loan establishments in their jurisdictions and to have a collective strategy, particularly working with the province, about additional powers we would like to see. So I'm just going to note that, that that's one thing I'll bring to AMO's attention on Friday.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. So on item number seven, the licensing and item 18 zoning, carried? Carried? Sir, we'll ask you to leave, please. Okay. So item number seven is licensing, item number 18 is zoning, carried? Carried. Adoptee. Item 13, councillor Mian had a question?
Yes, Your Worship. It has to do with, most councillors around the table, I know I have been, excuse upon, flooded with complaints about the new water rate structure. And, you know, we're doing our best to explain why the additional revenue is required. So my question has to do with, a sec. My question has to do with the capital reserve continuity. And I note, going through here, that the water reserve, the revenue reserve is sitting at $60 million. The wastewater reserve is sitting at $71.2 million, and that's $36 million higher than earlier this year. And stormwater reserve, $23 million, which is $16.75 million more than closing in 2018. So I'm, I'm, I know that we need the money. We've been told that we need it for infrastructure renewal, the increase in the water rates. But I'm wondering if there's a reason that the city is significantly adding to the respective reserve accounts? And the council can be assured that the funds will be used to maintain our water services? Because that's a lot of money that we're sitting on right now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Those numbers are correct. Those are the forecasted year-end balances. I can tell you, though, I know there's a report coming forward that will take a significant amount of the wastewater reserve for a particular project. When we do the long-range financial plan for these various services, we always try to make certain that we have enough money in the reserve account to fund next year's capital program. Because the capital program, unfortunately, is not constant. It is, it fluctuates from year to year depending on what the issues are we're trying to deal with. So we have a reserve policy that has been established as to how much is supposed to be in those reserves. And if we are above the amount, then what we would do is reduce the increase in the rate in the following year. So we will take that into account when we actually set the budget and the rate for 2020.
So just going back to like the wastewater reserve, you said we're sitting at, what, $71.2 million? So there's going to be a project, but it seems like, will that actually get back up to 71? I'm just, it seems like a lot of money. That's what I'm saying. It does, we're going to be, it's dedicated to projects in the coming year? This is ratepayer-funded, right?
It is ratepayer-funded. You're absolutely correct. We don't co-mingle the source of funds. So these are, come strictly from the water bill. When we do the long-range plan, though, you may seem like you have a lot of money in an account, but over time, we forecast how much we're going to use and how much is coming in, and we try to keep it at a constant level. These are capital-intensive services that you're providing here. These are not like social assistance or anything like that, which is almost entirely operating. So you need to have significant amounts in these reserves in order to ensure, should you have an unanticipated event, and I will remind you of when we had the Water Main Break that basically on Woodruff, that took Barhaven, where they had to reduce their water consumption for months. That was an unexpected capital work that we had to undertake that year, multimillion dollars' worth. You need enough in your reserve balance to basically be able to deal with those unanticipated expenditures, plus your regular program. So, but councillor, we do take the amount that's in the reserve into consideration because we look at things for a 10-year period, and we try to forecast what the rate increase is required, taking into account the amount in the reserves.
So we can assure that the folks who are suffering now, penny-pinching, trying to pay the additional water rate, a lot of people, especially in the rural areas, who had never paid it before, that this money is absolutely necessary?
This money is necessary, and I would counter your argument. They actually did pay it before. They paid it prior to amalgamation. It was only at amalgamation that they were relieved of that obligation for a short period of time.
Okay. That helps me explain. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Mian. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a chance to pose a number of our questions at FedCo recently, but I do want to make sure that I understand the budget directions with respect to the tax increase. The overall increase in staff's proposal would see the tax increase at 3% on existing properties. That is composed of a 2% in what I'll call the citywide component, which is non-transit and non-police. Transit, of course, is going up by 6.4, and police at 3. So the citywide portion, if I can call it that, at an increase of 2%. What is the, what is the absolute number of dollars that you would anticipate that will bring in?
I don't have that number in front of me right now, councillor, but if memory serves me correct, it's somewhere around $22 to $24 million.
So, and the budget directions document speaks to downloaded costs of, I think it was 13.6 million from the province?
That's correct, but I have to warn you, that is a number that we had at a moment in time. We put this report together in basically mid-August, and at that point in time, the province, or subsequent to that point in time, the province has actually reversed or deferred or changed a number of those pressures. We are, right now, there is only, as far as we know, the only one we have is about, we have some in childcare services and we have some in public health, but the long-term care pressure has been removed. So the, it's a moving target at this point in time.
Do you have a ballpark of what that number is right now?
I would guess it's probably less than half of what we've got in the budget directions report, probably around the $6 million mark. And that itself, we're still working with the province to understand those numbers. I suspect that may come down as well.
Okay. I just mentioned councillor Leeper. At AMO, it was announced the ambulance cut was reversed and increased by four, to 4%. And then just yesterday, I spoke with the chief of police, who indicated they received, they were receiving money for guns and gangs. It was a million more than they anticipated. So it is a bit of a moving target, given the uncertainty of what's happening at Queen's Park.
I know. You can certainly appreciate that, Mayor. So forgive me if I have this math convoluted, but roughly 27% of new tax dollars that are raised as a result of the 2% increase in the citywide would be allocated simply to dealing with pressures in the, that have been downloaded from the province, if those pressures work out to be roughly $6 million?
If they are all to be funded from taxation, but don't forget, there will be, staff will be looking to see if there are savings that can be had in those various areas to offset some of those reductions. Plus, you have also all types of other sources of revenue in the citywide that we know we can count on, which would offset as well. So it doesn't all fall to taxation, but if it was simply a straight math equation you're looking for, yes, you're, that's roughly 25% of what we would raise.
Okay. So I can't support capping our citywide tax portion to 2% when we are dealing with the magnitude of downloaded pressures from the province without having identified what those offsetting revenues would be. We spoke a lot at Fedco about, you know, how you can, the inflation that the city is facing, right? Our inflation, our consumer inflation is over 2% right now. Municipal inflation is running closer to 5. And when such a large percentage of new tax dollars are going simply to deal with pressures, that seems irresponsible. I can't support capping ourselves at 2%, 2% in the citywide, when we don't know what the magnitude of those downloaded pressures is going to be, and when we don't have a good idea that we can find offsets, whether it's through efficiencies or new revenues, that don't affect the services that we offer. So colleagues, I would ask you to take a more flexible approach to this year's city budget in light of the uncertainty that we have, and not support sending staff away with directions to create a 2% citywide budget, but rather to ask them to put together a budget that provides the services that residents expect from us and work the tax increase from there. Thank you.
So councillor, do you want to amend the report by putting in a new number?
No, I'm, I'll be dissenting from the direction that we're putting on the table.
So you're not proposing anything? Okay. So just to be clear, it's 3% that we're asking our taxpayers to pay, plus we're getting 1.5% in assessment growth, which is 4.5%, which is significant. Okay. So councillor Egli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a couple of questions, Madam Treasurer. As we all know, this has been a turbulent year for public health in Ontario, both in terms of how many agencies there will be next year, the governance, and most importantly, from your perspective and the city's perspective, the funding at this juncture. So I'm wondering if you can answer a few questions for me about the budget and how it's going to interact with OPH in 2020. What does the city actually spend in a given year to provide OPH services?
So in addition to the budget for OPH, because, as you all know, we have a centralized service delivery here in the city of Ottawa, so all of the indirect costs of delivering OPH services are in other budgets. So in addition to, you have roughly a $60 million budget in Ottawa Public Health, it's probably another $8 million of other city services that are required to provide OPH services. And that would include things like IT, human resources, finance, facilities, all of those combined would total about $8 million.
Okay, thanks. And what's the impact to the cost-sharing ratio with the province if these costs were to be added to the OPH budget? What sort of a change will we see?
If the, if we took into account the $8 million that we're spending to support the service, it would move you from what is currently now portrayed as a 75% province, 25% city, to roughly a 66% province, 34% city.
So, again, following up a little bit on councillor Leeper was saying there's different, police are getting three and different numbers depending on the departments. Given that OPH is, the city's is, OPH share of funding is going to be three and a half, two, plus the one and a half for growth, in 2020, which, again, I hope my math is right, is about $475,000. But the forecasted impact of the changes is a reduction of 6.4 million. So how can the city assist through the budget, and since we're talking about the directions, in dealing with the 2020 budget?
So first off, the 6.4 number that's in the directions report, we know there has been potential movement on that, so we don't actually anticipate that to be worth 6.4.
No, I say that because that's the worst-case, the worst-case scenario.
That is the worst-case scenario. Because we're only allocating, as you, and your number is correct, it's about $475,000 to Ottawa Public Health for, to deal with their service cuts or their service cost increases. What I would anticipate would happen, councillor Egli, is that whatever public health is not able to achieve through looking at their programs and reducing their costs, if they have to deal with that reduction in provincial funding, the offset would be on the city's side of the ledger. We would look for either temporary or permanent revenues to support the Ottawa Public Health services.
Okay. And what would the impact, what impact would that have on how much the OPH budget, how much the OPH budget the city is covering? Or I guess that's a fluid number, depending whether it's 6.4 or something else.
Exactly. It's, we could stay at the 34% if the province doesn't actually make the cuts, or if OPH is able to find the full reductions within their existing budget. It could move you up to as much as, I think it's 41% if the city has to absorb the entire 6.4 million.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification, also the confirmation that the city's going to be there for public health to fill that delta. So thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor Egli. Conseil Blais, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I fundamentally disagree with letting the tax rate float because of downloading. If we did that, the province will never learn, and they can just download and download and download, and we'll be stuck picking up the tab. Property taxes are the least efficient and most inequitable taxes any of us pay, and so I'm not sure why we would encourage raising property taxes so that the province can balance the budget. They said they knew how to do it. We need to stick to our commitments, our projections, and we should encourage the province to stick to theirs. And bailing them out by floating our tax rate higher than 3% isn't going to, isn't going to do that. Thank you.
I agree with councillor Blais that we shouldn't be covering the components that are of provincial responsibility. That said, when I see core services that we should be delivering being impacted, then I start to question. And one of the elements that I'm concerned about is, and I'd love to understand, is how is a budget developed? Because my understanding is, you're using this as a direction to prepare the budget, but then we can come back through committee and council and reprioritize, extend the value. So, but I want to understand from a procedural point of view, we're just giving you a direction to build it with a certain financial framework. Is that, would that be fair to say?
That is fair to say. You, we would build it at 3%. And I have to tell you, we're not starting the budget today. We've started the budget months ago. So we've already had a look at what your pressures are and how we could accommodate those within the 3%. And we're fairly confident that we can. But when we actually table the budget with you and it goes through the committee process, you do have the ability to add things in if you don't see whatever it is you're looking for, whatever service you want expanded or whatever. You get to do that at the committee level. Now, as per the directions that you adopted last year, if you don't have a funding source, it rises to committee of the whole when you adopt the final budget. So the discussion will happen there, unless you have an offsetting, either reduction or revenue at committee time.
And how would you develop a budget if you didn't have that, those percentages? Because my understanding is that there's been previous years where those directions weren't in place. How did that work?
Not well.
So your advice... But what I don't understand is, how do we, how do we, through this, you do the financial exercise to make sure that we stay within those 3%. I get that. But I don't, I don't find that there's visibility as to what are the demands of the department, what are the demands in the community relating to maintaining expectation to our core services? So every year, we trip up that, oh, we end up doing funding this less, or we end up not doing that. But there's no visibility through the budget process for us to see what those internal decisions were made, have been decided relating to the framework that we're providing. So I wonder how that's, how that's done, because we don't have visibility as to what the impacts are. You're working back into the departments to say, stay within these parameters to make the financial reality. But what's the impact on fleet? What's the impact on snow clearing? What's the impact on the various services? Those are very hard for us to see, yet with the following year, we realize, oh, yeah, we didn't actually... we didn't actually fund to where, to where we should have done. So I'm curious to see where, how does that, how does that come out of the budgeting process?
So first of all, you have a forecast for the current year, so you can see if there were any problems in your budgeting in 2019 that you want to have amended in 2020. That's something we do as well, and we put forward in the budget changes to address what we call base budget issues each year. You have an opportunity at the committee level to hear from the public as to what it is they want to see in the, in the budget. We always include, there's always growth in the budget, but we always are looking as well to see what is, we meet with every one of you to talk about your priorities and try to build as many of those as we can into the budget. You also, at the committee level, have an opportunity to ask the various departments if there are items that they would want to see included in the budget that may not have been included in there. But I would say to you councillor, that the, we present as much as we can to meet everybody's objectives, but this is not, the budget process hasn't changed, and I don't find that previous budgets were not transparent. They were very transparent, and there were lots of questions raised about why this account wasn't increased or why this account was. So that discussion happens at the committee level and in consultation with you and with your community.
Okay. Just on a final point, I have no issues with setting out the direction, but just to clarify, when it comes back to committee and council, and maybe I'm looking more to the clerk in this context, but we, when the, when the budget comes back, we can review and reprioritize. I'm concerned as to, we always get trapped up on, we have to identify an offsetting cost, but we could, at that point, decide that we increase an additional percentage if that is the wish of council, correct?
Mr. Mayor, at the end of the day, and I think we've discussed this in the past, council, when it's dealing with its budget, has no restrictions with regards to trade-offs or set-offs. So council can do as it deems appropriate.
So I'll be supporting the direction in front of us on the basis that if we find we're shortchanging, or there's a program that we need to support, we'll have that opportunity at that point.
Merci. Conseil Flory. Councillor Menard, please.
Thank you very much. I have a question around the process around participatory budgeting. This is something other cities have implemented in Canada.
Can you speak up councillor?
This is something other cities have implemented in Canada, and has been quite effective in terms of looking at portions of a budget that residents can feel they have some authority over, after all, it's their, it's their money. So have we, have we looked at participatory budgeting in Ottawa over the past several years, and is this something that finance staff would consider something that they could look at, not this budget process potentially, but in future budget processes?
I believe in amalgamation, there was discussion around setting up a portion of the budget that each community could basically deal with, and it revolved around sort of the recreational services in their various areas, and I, it never carried forward. So there has been no discussion since that time about carving out a portion that each community could decide how they wanted to allocate.
Okay. I guess just, just hearing that, there is some impetus to look at this, and so would it be possible to take it back, again, not for this cycle, but for future cycles, so in a year's time or so, to come back with what we, what that would look like in Ottawa? How could we get to a point where we're doing participatory budgeting? Obviously, the budget process has changed from when, prior to 2010, and I think there is, there's a desire to look at that sort of a model. So is that something you could take back to bring information back to council to see how this might work in the city?
Mr. Mayor, the, you know, as the clerk has said many times, council supreme, so if that's a motion that is passed by council and supported by council, staff will endeavor to implement that for our next budget cycle.
Okay. So you wouldn't take that as a direction, you'd want to see it as a, as a motion come forward? Okay, I'll work with you on crafting a motion for this budget cycle for the future on that particular item. I did want to raise to, similar to councillor Flory's points around this, it's tough to budget when you're saying, okay, we're going up this amount, but there's huge needs in other areas. And so in this budget, we're saying the transit levy is going up 6.4% and we're capping off at 3. In last year's budget, the transit levy went up less than that, 3.5%. And so obviously, that's taking away from other, some other areas within that 3% envelope. Do you see what I'm getting at? That when you, when you raise that portion, there's obviously a reduction somewhere else that would have been there in past budgets. And so it's hard to budget, it's hard to budget that way when you know there are needs from committees. My preference is that we go away in committees, we hear from delegations, we budget based on need, and we come back and say, we're too, we're too high at whatever percentage, there's some things we need to reduce here and there, but at least the needs are taken to account at that point, and this way, we're not, we're not getting to that same conversation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKenney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also don't, I also agree that it's not, it's not our responsibility always to backfill cuts that are being made at provincial level, and we know that there are cuts coming that are going to affect very marginalized people in our community. Child tax benefit being removed from, disability support, loss of housing because they're not able to access legal services the way that they, that they can today. We also know that, you know, over the past, at least decade, we've, you know, not always met the needs of the most marginalized in our city as well, and we've got, today we're, you know, staring down an opioid crisis, a housing crisis, and in the end, it's, it's a poverty crisis. It's a massive gap between those who have and those who don't that is contributing to it. So when we're looking at a 2%, I've never felt, and it's no secret, that 2% doesn't meet the, you know, the needs that of everyone, and doesn't make this city affordable for everyone. So I'm just going to ask the city manager if he believes that citywide tax levy of no more than 2% for, you know, citywide, will, will that, when we see that budget, do you believe that it will provide enough for proper mobility, winter maintenance, sidewalk clearing, so that, you know, our residents, you know, are able to get around, get transit, recreation, recreation for, for our youth, mostly for, you know, especially our disadvantaged youth? The housing needs, the gap in housing, we're, you know, we're falling behind, you know, almost monthly on our housing needs, our social infrastructure, the things that we need in this city to make it fair and equitable for absolutely everyone. Do you believe that that will be met in this budget that we are going to see in front of us at 2% citywide?
Mr. Mayor, I'll start by, by stating that the last three years, despite the tax direction that council has given us, we've managed to arrive with a surplus at the end of the year. So despite the ups and downs in various portions of the budget, including some of our social services and our operations, we have ended up with a surplus, which tells me that our budget has had capacity to deal with a number of unforeseen things, including tornadoes, several floods. And since I was appointed city manager, our team has worked hard to manage our risks and to bring back a budget that balanced at the end of the year. So that's a starting point in terms of my response, because I believe that, and this is a, I suppose, a perspective I have from, from the years I've spent here at the city, is that I just don't believe that, that, you know, as an organization, we've achieved peak efficiency. I think in a government organization, we're always chasing that, and we're always driving to find that. And I always believe, and our team is always challenged, to get more efficient, find continuous improvement, and find room in that budget, because we're 17,000-person organization, and there's always room to improve and to find those pockets of funding to move forward. The, the second piece that I would say is that I do differentiate between income distribution programs and programs that are run off the property tax base. I firmly believe that, and while several councillors have stated that they don't believe they should be backfilling the hole created by the province, we've had some relief from that, and I believe we're going to get more relief on that from indications we have around, around some of these programs that we thought were going to be cut. But the, the ability of the property tax rate to, to fill the room of many of the programs which the councillor has mentioned, I don't think is, is realistic in terms of housing, in terms of childcare, in terms of long-term care, in terms of public, or some of the other programs that are run out of our social services department. I just don't see how that's possible, and that's not what it's intended to do, and the tax is not the appropriate, property tax is not the appropriate vehicle to do that. So there is a decision, because obviously our, our residents, and many of them are affected by this, that council has to make and to create room within our budget. So all this to say that I do believe that setting a 2% plus the 1 to do the infrastructure challenges the organization, challenges the management of the organization to bring discipline, to make sure that our FTEs are used efficiently, to make sure that our programs are run efficiently, and ensure that we can deliver the program. And the results speak for themselves in that we haven't gone over budget despite all the challenges that we've had. So we, as a, as a perspective, and to go back to a previous question that was asked, I believe, and I've always believed, and it's a personal position that I have on this, and my advice to council is, staff need the discipline of a direction to be able to deliver a budget that then council can look at and ask the questions, so I'm taking a reverse position from what was proposed, where council can then ask the questions in terms of what haven't we done, what haven't you filled, what haven't you been able to do by what you brought forward? But without that discipline, the budget pressures that we, we accumulate or are faced with from the departments before we even start, and certainly councillor McKenney knows this because she was part of the process for about 85% of the operating budget capital, not that long ago, she knows this, is that, you know, we usually start with about a $50 million budget pressure, I'd say, before we, before we even get to the target. So that's about a 4%, you know, 3%, 4% tax rate, just to fund what the departments think that they need. But miraculously, every year, that $50 million somehow evaporates, and we still come in under a budget with a surplus. So from our perspective, are our services strained? Are we, are we struggling in some areas? Do we have a job to make sure we balance that out within all the budgets? Absolutely. But I'm confident that the 2% plus the 1 for infrastructure can meet the needs that are before us.
Well, I guess everybody's got a past, including me. Good one. But you won't be surprised to hear that I don't entirely agree with you, and I can say that now that you're not my boss. I do think that, you know, we do have some 19,000 households that are spending, you know, more than 50% of their, you know, their, their income on, on housing. I think that we, we are falling behind in meeting a lot of needs in our community, and we're not entirely responsible for that. Other levels of government have to step up. They haven't at any level of government, federal, provincial. But I, you know, I do go back to, you know, if we want to just talk core services, I'm not going to, you know, I don't believe that we plowed our streets as well as we could have, I don't believe we filled our potholes as well as we could have, I don't believe that we plowed and took care of our sidewalks as well as we could have, and I do think that we could also give people on transit a bit of a break. So there is, you know, I'm unable to, to agree to a cap, I never have, and so I'm, you know, I will be looking at the budget very closely and, you know, ensuring that all needs are met and that the city is affordable for absolutely everyone. Thank you.
Councillor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city manager for his very frank and truthful answer about the budget process. I appreciate that there is a need for some sort of direction at the outset to provide discipline to the process. I applaud staff for their efforts that they've done in the past with the budget, because we do put a lot of ass in there for the budget, and somehow, what comes out is something that the majority of us tend to support. In my time here, I don't think a budget has failed yet. What should I say here? Shocker alert, I'm going to agree with councillor McKenney on some of her points, that we need the other levels of government to revisit the tax point share that the city gets, and I hope that over the years to come, that we can start that dialogue with other levels of government, because there is a big demand at the municipal level for services, and yet we're very restricted in the funding that we have to deliver those services. So maybe the divorce is off, I don't know, but I'll agree with her on that point. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the city manager and offer my full support for his staff's effort to come up with a draft budget for us to reconsider. Thank you.
It warms my heart to see that, that combo together again, Hubley and McKenney. Just a couple of, anyone else wish to speak on this? Just a couple of observations. Consumer Price Index, 1.9% last month. Municipal inflation, I think the treasurer indicated that was completely disregarded, and the credibility of the municipal interest rate was thrown out by the auditor general, so we no longer use that. There used to be an inflation rate for everything, hospitals, school boards, universities, and so on. I think we have to stick with the Consumer Price Index, which is balanced across the city. Madam Treasurer, which programs for residents are being cut as of now in your...
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think the other thing to remember is that if we don't give any direction, the budget ends up becoming a wish list for every group that wants more money. And of course, you know, these groups, many of them have legitimate reasons, but I think councillor Blair hit the nail on the head when he said, what, you know, if we were to backstop every single cut from the provincial government, the premier and the cabinet would be laughing all the way to the next budget, and then they'll be coming back and hitting us even harder. We're working very hard with Lumco, with AMO, our colleague councillor Brockington, who sits as our representative on AMO, to push back on some of these cuts, and we've had some successes. Last year, thanks to the intervention of colleagues like Mayor Torry and myself and other mayors, the province stepped back from those cuts, and we thanked them for that because it was retroactive, it was just too much for us to handle halfway through the fiscal year. We worked with them on land ambulance, and that was, that cut was eliminated, and we ended up getting a 4% increase in land ambulance. The federal government, we pushed them hard to get funding for the refugee settlement costs that were costing our taxpayers millions of dollars. They've delivered on two occasions, I believe, a total of $17 million from Minister Blair. So we have had some success, we'll continue. We encourage members of council to lobby their MPPs and their MPs. We've sent out a questionnaire, as you know, to federal candidates running in this election to get them pinned down on everything from climate change to transit to infrastructure to affordable housing to public safety in our communities. So I think it's important that we do give direction to staff, you know, and that's why I asked, if people don't support the 3% increase, then what is their proposal? Because that is really necessary, otherwise the staff will put together what they used to in the good old days, where the budget came back with 16, 17%. I remember one year, all things being equal, with no reductions whatsoever, Dave O'Brien, the former city manager of the old city of Ottawa, I think I might be the only one who served with him, brought back a, Steve Cadillac has brought back a 20.05% budget. And then everyone gets outraged, it's the headline in the newspaper, and then we all, you know, take a deep breath and curb it back to bring it into something that's more reasonable and acceptable to ensure that our city remains affordable. So on item 13, yes and nays, been called.
Councillor Egli. Councillor Suds.
Yes.
Councillor Elchantiri.
Yes.
Consulier Blay.
Oui.
Councillor Leeper.
Non.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Non.
Councillor King.
Non.
Councillor Harder.
Of course.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor Shirelli, councillor Luloff, councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Deans, councillor De Ruz.
Yes.
Councillor Meehan.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Moffett, conseil Fleury.
Oui.
Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Councillor McKenney.
Non.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
14 yays, 6 ayes.
Okay, that carries. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption of report, councillor Tierney, signed by councillor Gower. One moment, please. And councillor Meehan, you had spoken on the one, it wasn't 14, it was 13, that you had asked to speak on. Remember, you came up to me and, okay.
No, I talked to you, and I spoke on it.
Yeah, so not 14, but it was 13 that you spoke on. Okay.
Can I just ask a question, clarification? I got, I was, I would like to rescind my previous vote. I meant to vote yes.
Okay, with concurrence of council?
Is that...
Agreed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 15, did someone hold item 15, term of council priorities?
I had it.
No, okay. Councillor Brockington, okay. On 15, carried. Councillor Tierney, signed by councillor Gower, please.
Sweet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the report from the integrity commissioner entitled "Report to council on inquiries respecting the code of conduct of councillor De Ruz," "The Ottawa Board of Health, Report 4," "The report of the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation entitled 'The Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation 2018 Annual Report,'" "Build Heritage Subcommittee, Report 5," "Community and Protective Services Committee, Report 6," "Standing Committee on Environment and Protectional Water Waste Management, Report 5," "Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report 7A," "Planning Committee, Report 12," "Transit Commission, Report 2," and the reports from the city clerk entitled "Information previously distributed: revised agreement between the City of Ottawa and the Ottawa Champions Baseball Club, 300 Coventry Road," and a summary of the oral written submissions for the items subject in the Planning Act. Explanation requirements in the city meeting of September 11, 2019 be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion, carried, adopted. Motions of which notice have been given previously, motions dont aviez été donnés entièrement. Councillor Brockington, please, seconded by myself.
Thank you, your worship. I'm certainly very proud to speak briefly in support of the motion to name what we now know as the Airport Parkway pedestrian bridge, formerly the Juno Beach Memorial Bridge. This bridge in River Ward spans the airport parkway and connects the Hunt Club community with the South East community, and was opened in 2014. And what precipitated this was a tragic accident that happened on the airport parkway where a young man lost his life crossing. There were many people in the community who would cross the airport parkway to get from one community to another, and that led to the community coming together and talking about the need for this bridge. And of course, the bridge, as I said, was opened in 2014. It has a unique architectural style. It really is a gateway feature to our community. As visitors have arrived at the airport, this is certainly the first main city structure that they see, and it really is deserving of this name. There has been some interest in councillor Gower's ward as well with respect to a commemoration for Juno Beach, and I do want to acknowledge his community and his service as well. We were working on this together when this first came off the ground, and I appreciate that, of course, your worship as well. The naming does have the support of the Royal Canadian Legion Ontario Command and the Juno Beach Centre Association, which are national organizations and have been involved in the preliminary organization of an event, which is tentatively scheduled for November the 8th or 9th, it's the Friday before Remembrance Day. So, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a great initiative, particularly commemorating the Canadian sacrifices that were made during the Second World War, and the Canadian involvement in particular at D-Day on Juno Beach. This is a very, very fitting naming for this bridge. Thank you.
Great. I want to, obviously, I'm seconding our support. I want to thank councillor Brockington for bringing this forward. I know councillor Gower had constituents who were quite interested in naming something after Juno Beach, and I'd encourage all members of council to support this as a tribute to our veterans and those who fought in the Second World War. On the motion, carried. Thank you. Next motion is by, le prochain motion, conseiller Fleury, appuyé par conseiller Leeper, une centre, le carré de la francophonie de Vanier. Monsieur conseiller.
Merci, maire. Je pense la motion par...
Well, I think the motion speaks for itself, since Vanier represents a francophone bastion in Ottawa, and whereas French is historically one of countries' official languages, and whereas francophones make up a large percentage of Vanier population, and whereas September 25 is now Franc-Ontarian Day, and whereas we are aware that there is already a centre francophone de Vanier at 270 Marie Street in a building named Place la Francophonie at 450 Rideau Road, whereas the Vanier Community Association is a community service centre where the terrace is located to support the initiative, and whereas we're in the midst of revitalizing Montreal Road and Place Dupuis, provides a great opportunity for programming. Therefore, be it resolved that council declare that the terrace at 290 Dupuis Street shall now be known as Carrie de la Francophonie de Vanier. Anyone else on this? Carried, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Fleury.
Signed by councillor Leeper, and there's an amending motion, which I believe is friendly. Councillor Brockington, do you want to read your motion, and then I'll hand it over to councillor McKenney, please. Signed by councillor Gower.
Thank you. Just an amendment, be it further resolved, sorry, it's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Gower. This is to complement the McKenney-Leper motion, that in accordance with subsection 81b of the procedure bylaw, the mayor's chair of FedCo retain the authority to vary the location of individual FedCo meetings should there be a light legislative agenda where there are no significant citywide issues.
Okay, councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I accept that as a friendly amendment. Do you want me to read it out, or you want to, it's a page and a half, in both official languages?
Sir, on the amendment, it's friendly?
Yes.
So on the amendment, carried. On the motion, carried. Thank you. Next is motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Notice the motion for consideration of subsequent meaning of its motion par exemple. I have one moved by myself, signed by councillor Leper. This is to name a park, Fairmont Park in the Civic Hospital neighborhood, in honor of Princess Marguerite, who is, all of us know, was born at the Civic Hospital during the Nazi occupation of the Netherlands, so we'll have a discussion on this at the next council meeting. Any other notices of motion? Motion to introduce bylaws, motion important presentation de règlement, councillor Tierney, signed by councillor Gower, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed in the agenda under the motions to introduce bylaws, three readings to be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, please, councillors Tierney and Gower.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of September 25, 2019.
Carried. I have one written inquiry, councillor Fleury, please.
The first phase of Rideau streetscaping was completed in 2014, yet most of the new street furniture is either damaged or missing due to the lack of replacement plan. Deduzie Street to the Cummings Bridge is missing a number of garbages, benches, and bike loops. This does not reflect well for a main street with a business improvement area. One, what is the city planning to do to ensure better quality control of street furniture purchases? And two, what is the replacement plan for the street furniture for the previously referenced area on Rideau Street?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brockington, I believe, has a written inquiry.
Thank you, your worship, a written inquiry as well. With the general manager of Public Works, please detail what improvements and enhancements will be made during the 2019-2020 snow clearing operation season, particularly on sidewalks, at bus stops, and roadways. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Great. That the proceedings of the city council meeting of September 25, 2019 be adjourned.
Carried, carried. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Merci.